I will have a prayer by Councilman Graham, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hopefully, I get through this. My voices, I'm losing my voice, but please power your heads and let us pray. Dear gracious and eternal Father, I ask that you continue to have your hands on our beloved city and that you continue to provide this mayor and council with the wisdom to guide Jefferson City in the right direction. Lord, I ask that you continue to bless those who were and still is affected by the tornado from several months ago. Lord, I pray for those who are going through tough times within their body, whether it be diabetes, cancer, sickle cell, autism, or high blood pressure. We need you, Lord, to handle it, so we give it all to you tonight, right now. Bless our public safety members and their families. Be with them while they are serving and protecting our city 24 hours a day, even while we are asleep. Lord, I ask you to dispatch your two angels, grace and mercy, all around us. I also pray, Lord, for our country's safety. As we approach Veterans Day, I ask that you bless the soldiers that guard our borders and are fighting on foreign soil, so we may enjoy freedom. I ask that you keep those that live here in the United States of America safe from others who intentions are to do us harm for being free, for worshiping you, and for allowing people to speak freely. Lord, I want to thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for last night laying down, but most of all, this morning getting up. Father, help us to realize that one of the reasons you allowed us to wake up this morning is so we could try and get it right today. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, November 4, 2019, City Council meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham?
Here.
Hensley?
Present.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Present.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have item A. We get to present the GIS Day proclamation. So we have some of our GIS team here this evening. We'd like to invite them to come up to the podium tonight. And if you would like to introduce yourself and tell us your positions, and then I have a special proclamation to share this evening.
I'm Buster Shragg, GIS manager.
Katrina Williams, planner.
Jill Ryan, GIS specialist.
Welcome. And would you like to say anything about GIS Day?
Sure. So, November 13 is National GIS Day, and it's the one day of the year where people actually might come and look to see what stuff we're doing within the city, because it's a lot of the interaction we have with the public and everyone. It's a website, and so it's really nice for us to kind of interact with users that come to see some of the data that we put forth and see how that information is helping the city move our programs along. And also, with our event, we're going to highlight the tornado response, just kind of show off all of the coordination that we did with police and fire that night, and as well as the following days that happened after that. So, we're looking forward to demonstrating that to everybody, and kind of taking everybody behind the curtain, so to speak, to see how it all went down, so.
Great. Well, we appreciate you all being here tonight, and we want to help you celebrate that. And I do have a special proclamation to share, and it reads, "Whereas the City of Jefferson recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the City of Jefferson. And whereas GIS technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas the City of Jefferson acknowledges and supports those that have chosen GIS as their profession, or as part of their profession, to improve the lives of our citizens. And whereas having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education and inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good. And whereas the City of Jefferson is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim November 13 as GIS Day in the City of Jefferson." And then, we do have the special flyer that you talked about for GIS Day, and that event, again, is Wednesday, November 13, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Police Department Training Classroom at 410 Monroe. And we'll make sure we have this information on our website and the city's Facebook page to promote that. Does council have anything to add or questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I think it's important to note that this is a cooperative between Cole County and the City of Jefferson. I think we have a resolution tonight, or a bill to pass, sharing an SQL server.
Yes.
So, also, I know for a fact Buster, and I assume the brothers, were unsung heroes during the tornado. I know that they were up to all night practically with the data and working with emergency personnel. And if you haven't seen some of the drone footage, where they can slide from old to new to the tornado, it is amazing what you see from the air. Did SEMA fly over? Was that SEMA's role to fly over?
Yes, that was, SEMA paid for that. And one of the things that we're going to be highlighting is the how quickly, from Chief Schofield coming over at 4 o'clock that morning, asking if we can get a flyover to having an airplane up in the air at 9:30 on Friday morning, on Memorial Day weekend, and having that data delivered, signed, sealed, and delivered before, I think it was Friday evening, when we received the aerial photography, so.
Thank you for your work and the team's work behind the scenes, and we're proud to have also a great sponsor in Cole County and working with our GIS system.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of council? We appreciate the work that you all do every day, and I don't think we sometimes realize or think about just how much we use GIS information and how very important that is in our everyday lives here in the city. And so, we appreciate what you do. So, if you'd like to come forward, I'll present All right, item 4B, we have with us Emerging Leaders of Azerbaijan proclamation. So, we have some special visitors that have come a really long way. We would like to invite them forward to the podium this evening and welcome them tonight. And they are sponsored by the Rotary Clubs here in Jefferson City, and so we have a lot of fellow Rotarians here in the audience tonight. So, we welcome all of you. It is great to have you here tonight. And if you'd like to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you're doing while you're here in Jefferson City.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fatima. I've been working for United States Embassy in Azerbaijan little over than 20 years. And I'm a facilitator of this group. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here and enjoy our trip very much.
Welcome. We're very happy to have you. So, if you all would like to tell us your name, and we'd love to welcome you here.
My name is Arslan Hajib. I am a farm manager. Work for Azar Sheker LLC in Azerbaijan. Azar Sheker is an investment project which aims to build sugar processing company, sugar processing factory in Azerbaijan. And we are here to learn your experience, to learn your knowledge. And I'm also glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I'm Gunay Hassanli from Azerbaijan. I'm working for a forest company as sales manager. And we are sales, we sales German and American agriculture technology. I am happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Zohra Mamedva. I'm working for the Ministry of Agriculture of the Republic of Azerbaijan. I'm also glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sultan. I'm a CEO of the Smen Agro Company. This is smart and innovative agriculture. We bring smart technology from USA. We install it, we serve it. This is some kind of technology which collects data from open areas about the agriculture. So, we are partnering with American companies, for example, with spectrum technologies. Also, this is my first time in America. I'm very excited. We are here to gain new experience, to see how your agricultural system, agriculture is organized here. I'm very happy to be here, just a bit excited. Thank you for everything.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I am Rusam Rajabov, Philosopher Doctor in Geography. I represent the private company. Name is Gilan Holding, which is especially, they have a lot of field in agriculture, like cotton, wheat, barley, and etc. I am glad to be here. Thank you for receiving us in this meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nurlan Abdinov. I am work as a project coordinator at Azerbaijan Organic Company LLC. We produce organic products and beverage, and try to restore endemic plants in Kaukasin region. It's a great pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for everything.
Well, thank you. We are glad to have you here this evening, and I have a special proclamation that I'd like to share, and it says, "Whereas Open World Leadership Center, an independent agency of the United States Congress, sponsors and funds the Open World Program, which brings emerging leaders from mostly Eurasian countries to the United States through Rotary, international and local Rotary Clubs to build opportunities that help find solutions to contemporary issues. And whereas climate change is a global issue that requires collaboration to properly maintain and grow new technologies that assure continued agriculture development. And whereas currently Azerbaijan's agricultural sector is at an increasing risk from higher temperatures, unpredictable rainfall, and natural disasters. Soil, forest reserve, and biodiversity losses have also occurred due to climate change. And whereas emerging leaders from Azerbaijan will visit Missouri from November 1 through the 9 to meet and collaborate with agricultural entrepreneurs, researchers, government, and academic leaders to discuss issues and methodologies related to climate change and gain new insights and methods to maintain and enhance agriculture development. So, therefore, we hereby welcome, on behalf of the City of Jefferson, all of the emerging leaders of Azerbaijan. So, we're happy to have you here. And so, you're here from November 1 through the 9. So, what are some other things you've done here in Jefferson City? I know you met with Lieutenant Governor. I did hear firsthand from him that he welcomed you all to his office.
So, we met with some specialists in agriculture. Sorry, sorry.
I said, I'm a bit excited, that's why. So, we met with some specialists in agriculture field, starting from smart technologies. We visited city agriculture department. So, we had a really great and important time. There, as we said, we are here to gain new experience, to see how the agriculture field organized here. Also, we visited city organic research center. It was very exciting to be here, to see how your specialists work in this sector, because this sector also is going to be organized, is going to be in progress in our country. Now, we are here to see how you gather together, how you discuss some things here. Even in Azerbaijan, I have never stayed like this, behind some important persons. Really, it's a great opportunity. We are having a great time here. I think I said enough things. Thank you.
Your English is very good, and we appreciate that. And I have to ask, and we also have Kit from Breakfast Rotary, so have they been to Central Dairy yet?
They're being home hosted, and so if they have been to Central Dairy, it's because their host families are taking them to Central Dairy. They tailgated a Lincoln University football game.
All right.
Today, they were at the Missouri Department of Agriculture for the morning and Lincoln University for the afternoon. Tomorrow, they're being hosted by Peter Hoffhaer of St. James Winery for an in-the-field vineyard tour. And then, the Department of Conservation for a fish hatchery tour, and also the sod farm across the way. They're spending a day with Mizzou with their research for H extension agents. They're spending another day with Lincoln University. It is amazing what Lincoln University has to offer the agricultural community. And then, on Friday, they're spending the day at two farms in Callaway County, one north of Avos and one just outside of Fulton. So, they'll spend a full day in the field doing that. And then, at 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, they leave. So, Julia Plush, who's the president of the Breakfast Rotary Club, and Angie Kenworthy, and Zitwila, and I'm sorry, Z, I don't know your last name, put together the grant application, and the team was picked for Jefferson City or for Central Missouri. They flew into Columbia, they're flying out of Columbia. So, for most of them, their only experience of Missouri is us. So, I'm just so pleased that we were able to put this together, and very grateful to all of the Rotarians of the four clubs that were able to host and provide input. Thank you.
Well, that is wonderful. We're glad to have you all here. Does council have any questions or comments? All right, well, on behalf of everyone, we welcome you here. And if you would all like to come forward, I'll present the proclamation to you, and we'll get a photograph. And then, maybe for our second photograph, we'll get the all the Rotarians.
Just one moment, just one moment.
Yes.
And also, I want to add that we have some presents for you. Let us give these presents, then take a photo, okay?
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Wow. Now, these are beautiful. Wow. Okay, so what are these? These are some carpet?
Traditional.
Traditional, traditional handmade carpet?
Maiden towers.
Okay. Maiden tower, okay.
It used to be located in the sea.
Okay, was located in the sea before. Very, a lot of history. Wow. Well, thank you. I'll have to write something up and put it with this. We will proudly display this here in the mayor's office, so others can come and enjoy it also. Wow. And for the city administrator, Steve, okay, who is also a Rotarian. I will make sure that we share that with them, and thank you very much. And I'll hold these during our picture. So, thank you very much. It's such an honor. Thank you. So, we'll get everybody, and then the second picture, I'd like to bring the Rotarians up, too.
Most Rotarians in the picture, if you can kind of squeeze in on the fringes here and try to get everybody in. I'm sorry. Okay, and then if we can get the, I'm sorry, sorry. And if we can get the Rotarians in kind of on the sides, and everybody squeeze together a little bit, we'll get everybody in there. Apologize for delaying your meeting, but they've come a long way.
Yeah, you guys may need to, you may need to do-
Yeah, just a little bit from that way, if you can squeeze in a little bit on the inside. I think I can get it. Okay, we got everybody in there. Try to take a couple of them. There we go.
Okay, one more here.
Yep.
Ready? One, two. Get somebody else?
No, it's all right.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you guys want to get in?
Oh, okay.
So, we don't get that in there. Okay, ready? One, two, three. for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but you're welcome to go out for the rest of the evening. But you can view this meeting online, so you can share it around the world with your families and friends at JeffersonCityMo.gov. We are livestreamed and recorded, so please share this with your families, and we appreciate you coming so far and having all of you here. Again, welcome to Jefferson City, along with all the Rotarians. Thank you. Item five, we have public hearings. We will start with item 5A1, which is Bill 201958.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana testing and transportation facilities.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would expand the zoning districts where medical marijuana testing and medical marijuana transportation facilities could be located. It is a staff-initiated bill. It would expand the districts. Currently, both of those uses are identified as permitted uses within the M1 and the M2, the industrial zoning districts. It would expand that by listing both of them as a permitted use within the C2, the general commercial zoning district, in addition to the existing industrial manufacturing districts. It was an item that, of course, staff have been updating the zoning code with respect to medical marijuana uses ever since the passage of the statewide initiative dealing with that matter. And so, this is actually the third time that zoning code amendments have been presented to you regarding medical marijuana uses. Basically, after reflection by staff, and then there's a response to questions that have been presented by staff, or to staff by people seeking to locate such facilities, it came to the conclusion that there's some uses very similar to those types of uses that are already permitted uses within that C2 district. And so, in an effort to align what is already permitted with this new use, felt it appropriate to propose this zoning code amendment. It was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a vote of five to one at their September meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to the public hearing. We do have a map that gives a sense of the different areas where the uses would be able to be located within the city, with the red areas on the map identified as that C2, the new area where these uses could be located. There's still standards in place regarding separation distance from churches, schools, and daycares, a 1,000-foot separation that would be in place. So, none of those uses could locate closer than 1,000 feet to those uses. Again, be happy to answer any questions prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing for Bill 201958. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on the bill this evening. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. We will take up Bill 201958. Is there any council discussion or questions or deliberation? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Stand.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, we have no appointments this evening. Item seven, we have no presentations. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Our committee meetings are listed at JeffersonCityMo.gov for a full meeting calendar. Does council have any meetings to announce? Councilman Hussey?
I would just announce that the next Public Works and Planning Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 14 at 7:30 a.m. here at City Hall.
Thank you, Councilman Hussey. Any other committee meetings or announcements? Councilman Graham?
The next public safety meeting is scheduled for the last Thursday of this month. Of course, that is Thanksgiving, so we will not have a meeting in November.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council announcements? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. Our next administration committee meeting is Wednesday at 7:30 a.m., and we're continuing to discuss charter amendments.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I do have a few announcements. I'd like to announce that there is an open house. If anybody would like to view Ivy Terrace, they are looking for developers. That's located at 500 East Capitol, and that is this Wednesday, November 6. The open house is from 9 to 1:30. The Housing Authority is hosting that for those that are interested in potential redevelopment of that area. So, if you do go, there are some guidelines as far as wearing closed-toe shoes and that kind of thing. So, you can get information on the Housing Authority's website, which is www.jchamo.org. Again, that's jchamo.org for the Housing Authority. And if you go on their website under latest news and Capitol Avenue, you can see the new properties available for redevelopment. It is very exciting that those homes are now going to be available for viewing, and hopefully, we'll have some interest in redevelopment of that. We know that we've had some success with the first few homes that were put out there. So, now, I believe there are about six or so properties. But the one in particular, there's one that will have the open house on Wednesday, and that is Ivy Terrace. So, looking forward to that. Another announcement, of course, we know yesterday we all changed our clocks, as it was kind of pitch dark when our council meeting started. But if you didn't already, be sure to change your battery in your smoke detector, and remember that your smoke detectors should be replaced every 10 years, right, Chief Schofield?
You said it perfectly.
Great. So, everybody, if you didn't do that, please check those smoke detectors. They're very important. Also, want to congratulate the Elias Lady Crusader softball team. So, they are the state champions. So, we have extended an invitation to them to come to a future city council meeting. So, exciting for them. And I know most of you already have your flu shots. Are there any council members here who have not? What's that face? Oh, that's okay. Okay, I was going to say, oh, if you haven't, it's all right, because So last year, I cornered Superintendent Larry Lenthicum, but he beat me to it this year and already got his flu shot. But I have challenged Lieutenant Governor Mike Keough and he has accepted. So this week, we will be getting our flu shot at the Cole County Health Department. And Kristy, who is the director, Kristy Campbell, wanted me to be sure to announce that if you haven't received your flu shot, they do provide those at the Cole County Health Department. So we will be doing that. And anyone else who has that face like Hensley can join me, although you already got yours, but... Nothing's private when you're the mayor. All of the health screenings, don't worry, the whole world knows. We're encouraging others to stay, stay healthy, Councilman Hensley. Okay. Gail, Mrs. Strope.
If I could just mention real quick, the city employees' flu shot drive is this Wednesday from 8:00 to noon, so we'll have flu shots available for all city employees during that time.
Great. Well, I will put out that challenge to all of the, including myself, right? But I will make sure and stop by and encourage everyone, so thank you, Gail. And item B, the Missouri 2021 bicentennial moment, I will remind everyone that the photo contest for the Missouri bicentennial entries were accepted and that officially closed last week. So if you missed it, I'm sorry because I've been announcing it every meeting to check out Missouri 2021 on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. So if you're following that, then you know about that photo contest, so very exciting. There's a lot of great things going on for the bicentennial, so be sure to check that out. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Ms. Carolyn Winjarro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council as a whole. First and foremost, I would like to thank all of Jefferson City citizens as well as you, Madam Mayor, for being present at the Nursing School Gala on this past weekend. We greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate the support that we get from the city because it goes a long way. As I always say, Jefferson City is, Lincoln University is Jefferson City's school. And so we greatly appreciate all of you all for the support that you all show unto us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, and that was a wonderful gala for the 50th anniversary for the nursing program. And I know we had, Councilman Kimna was there along with Councilman Graham and Councilman-
Hensley.
Hensley.
Mahalovich.
And I know we had quite a good showing. Oh, and Hensley's newest addition to his family.
Right.
His first gala. Yes. So that was, that was a wonderful evening. Councilman Graham?
I also like to add that on next Thursday, which is November 14th, at 6:00 p.m., doors open up at 5:30. Each semester, we have the Presidential Lecture Series in which the president invites of, of two different people to come in and speak to the students and to the community. So next Thursday at 6:00 p.m., Ms. K.T. McFarland, who served as the Deputy National Security Advisor under President Trump, will be here. And that's at the Student University Center. Doors open at 5:30. The event starts at 6:00. So once again, Ms. K.T. McFarland, the former Deputy National Security Advisor, will be here in Jefferson City to speak to our students and to the community, so please come out.
Thank you, Councilman Graham, and I forgot a couple of dates to throw out during my announcement, so I'll announce those now. In December, December 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th, so I have four days of announcements. So December 4th is the annual Polar Plunge, the Power Hour Plunge, where we have a challenge. Sheriff John Wheeler and I are taking the plunge, and I think Councilman Mahalovich is doing that again. Yes, he is for the third time, whether you like it or not. So I think if you raise, what is it, $1,000 or 500? I'll have to check. I don't know because I'm doing it, but it's, then you have the opportunity to run through the freezing cold hazmat sprinklers. Oh, and Chief Schofield, you did it last year.
Yeah, I think the police are gonna step up this year is what I heard.
All right, you heard it here. I think he was looking at you, Captain Wildy.
And he can keep looking. We'll talk it out of outside.
Okay, y'all figure that out. So it all benefits Special Olympics. It's actually a very fun event. It's on Madison Street and it's something very unique to Jefferson City. There are a lot of polar plunges, but this is something that we started here in Jefferson City that's actually done on the street. So we hope you can join us. That's Wednesday, December 4th. Thursday, December 5th is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting at 5:30 p.m. and Jefferson City Parks and Rec, I know is already getting their plan for the theme and the mayor's Christmas tree, so that's exciting. And then Friday, the 6th, is downtown living windows from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then Saturday, the 7th, is the annual J.C.'s homecoming, uh, homecoming. It is, isn't it?
Yes, so we're having Christmas parade on Saturday. The Jefferson City J.C.'s are hosting that. It's 4:30 downtown Jefferson City. And if you'd like to be in it, registration is still open and you can register on Facebook. There's a link under the Jefferson City J.C.'s Christmas Parade page, and I think Rick's gonna be in that, too.
Oh, there you go, if you need Santa. So that is Saturday, December 7th. Okay, we will all be there. Thank you. All right, now, where are we? Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills. We have nobody signed up tonight. Item 11, Consent Agenda as Their Motion to Approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 201964.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Donald R. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981 and the Clara M. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981 and executed by their trustee Clara M. Rackers for the purchase of property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is for a purchase of property at the corner of Dunklin and Clark Avenue. It's anticipation of our roundabout that's being designed there currently. Purchase price, $250,000, and I think clerk can read off several names that it's listed as, but basically we're purchasing that property currently houses the Joshua House Church. And the companion bill is the next one on the list. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. We haven't formally adopted or approved that plan though, right? For that construction?
For the, not that, the final construction plan. Typically, it's in the sales tax as illicit projects, so after we complete design, purchase the property, then it would be bid for final, final bid.
When was the last traffic study?
Uh, the traffic study was, was adopted by the council. It was about a year ago it was completed.
Have we gotten, I assume some of us have gotten Bartlet's and Bartlet and West's sort of the final report on the study of solutions that they presented for that intersection?
Yeah, it's been in several packets, I know, so.
I don't know that, I don't know that it's been in the whole council pack, maybe just-
Maybe Public Works and Planning.
Could we all get access? Yeah, of course we could if it's in the Public Works folder. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
And I'd add that we also have an agreement with the county to participate. This is a city-county project where we selected the preferred option of the roundabout and started pursuing that through a design contract.
Thank you. 201965.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a property lease amendment with the Joshua House Church for property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As I just indicated, currently the church, Joshua House Church, resides in the, in the property we're purchasing with this previous bill. And, and so in an effort to accommodate them before the building has to be removed, this would modify, the, the property purchase assigns the lease to the city, so the lease is assignable. They had a lease through August 2020, and so one thing about the lease, though, the property owner was to do all the maintenance on the building. So in an effort to streamline that with the city processes, we don't, you know, we're not a property maintenance group. We've modified the lease but kept it through 2020 as original and modified the cost to $100 per month for the church. And, and then, you know, it could be extended if the project pushes out further, but we anticipate going to construction a few months into 2021.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, 201966.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with Cole County for the reconstruction of the Militia Drive railroad crossing as part of the Morris Development Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. So as clerk indicated, we have a city-county agreement to extend the rail spur to Morris Packaging, 50-50 agreement. Yeah, in the east side of town on Algoa area. Basically, that contractor is a specialty contractor that does railroad work. And so this, this agreement would allow us to modify the agreement with the county to do a change order with the contractor to replace the crossing that the city maintains on Militia Drive. City's responsible for the crossing. County is responsible for the tracks leading to and from the crossing. We did contemplate, county asked, perhaps we could all share in the cost of all the improvements. And so we did some research into that and found that it's most beneficial to allow the county to continue to maintain the tracks and the city maintain the crossing. So the crossing replacement, it's lasted about 15 years now, 141,000. Basically, the ties rotted underneath, so the panels have been rocking and kicking up. So we're going back with some better, better, better ties underneath the new crossing. The contract's available due to work and be happy to answer any question. The cost is $141,000 and that comes from sales tax funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, 201967.
In ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation improvement bonds, Park System Project Series 2019, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7,500,000, prescribing the form and details of said bonds and the covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This ordinance approves various documents which will result in the issuance of bonds in the amount of not to exceed $7.5 million in special obligation bonds for parks projects. City's special counsel, Gemraun Bell, serving as bond counsel on this deal with the assistance of Piper Jaffrey as the city's municipal financial advisor. This bond would obligate approximately half a million dollars a year in debt issuance to pay for various improvements to the park system described in the Parks Master Plan. I believe Todd can answer any specifics on any projects, and I'm happy to answer any questions on the bonds themselves. And I believe council, bond counsel, and representatives from Piper Jaffrey will, will be joining us at the next council meeting for final reading and approval. If there's any highly technical questions that I can't answer tonight, but I say give it your best shot.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of council? All right, thank you. 201968.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code, to establish short-term rental of a residence and short-term rental of a lodging room as a permitted use in the residential and industrial zoning districts.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this bill deals with short-term rentals and amending the zoning code pertaining to areas where those are permitted use. Short-term rentals are defined within the zoning code as residential units, so existing residences that are being rented out for a period of less than one month. Typically, you would see these types of units listed on various online platforms with VRBO and Airbnb being some of the more popular ones. But the, the short-term rental use, back in January of 2018, the city council adopted the original regulations dealing with this use and inserting them into the zoning code. Prior to that, there really were no regulations in place that permitted that type of, of use, the renting out of residences for short-term purposes. It was adopted into the zoning code in two parts. One part dealing with establishment of certain standards called specific use standards that would be applicable to all short-term rentals. Uses such as how many guests can be present within the residence when it's rented out, how many, or making sure that they're not being used for parties and receptions or things like that, making sure they have adequate parking, making sure they're licensed with respect to business licensing and paying lodging tax, and also making sure that they're inspected, particularly with respect to the life safety, the fire inspections and such. That was one part of that insertion into the zoning code. The other part was establishment of a special exception permit review process for short-term rentals, most notably in the residential zoning districts, but also the industrial. And so the, the special exception permit is a permit that a property owner applies for. It goes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, very similar to a rezoning, with a public hearing and surrounding property notification. And then after the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation, it comes to the city council for final review and decision. So the, that has been established and within the zoning code for just under two years. And in those two years, there have been a total of nine applications for special exception permits for short-term rentals, processed through the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately by the city council. All nine of the applications were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and all but one of the nine applications were ultimately approved by the city council. This bill would reclassify short-term rentals from being a special exception use, requiring that special exception permit, to a permitted use within all of the residential zoning districts, and again, also the, the industrial districts. The, the main purpose within the industrial districts is that there are existing grandfathered residential units that happen to be zoned industrial or even commercial. We want to make sure they are granted the, the same rights as any other residence within, within town. But the primary effect would be within the, the single-family and multifamily zoning districts. This matter was originally brought up by the Administration Committee at their August meeting of this year. Back in, in 2018, or actually 2017, as this item was first coming forward, it actually appeared in front of the Administration Committee because there were multiple things that, that it was touching, dealing with licensing, lodging tax, and zoning. But ultimately, at the August meeting of the Administration Committee, it was recognized that it's really a land use matter, a P&amp;Z matter. And so staff brought the topic to the September meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a discussion item to get a sense of what the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to do with this issue with so many special exception permit applications coming forward and for the most part them being reviewed and approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission and mostly by the city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to direct staff to pursue a zoning code amendment to do, to do this, to establish them as a permitted use within all the zoning districts. And so then at the October 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this item was brought up for a formal public hearing. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this, this bill. It is scheduled for a public hearing on November 18th in front of the city council at 6:00 p.m. At the staff level, this, this particular item has been fairly controversial whenever individual cases, whenever there are individual cases brought up within neighborhoods. But as a general topic item, we, we don't seem to get a whole lot of comments on, you know, indications on where the public sees negative impacts of the use as a whole across the community. There are various items, you know, the cost associated with bringing a special exception permit through the Planning and Zoning Commission, city council is a fairly high cost. Right now ranges at about 500, or a $500 application fee. And that has been one comment that we've received from people who are looking at pursuing short-term rental uses, that the application fee they feel is, is a little high in terms of, you know, perhaps affecting their decision whether to pursue that use. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Graham?
I do have one. So this amendment allows the go-around from P&amp;Z, which mean that these individual items have to go before P&amp;Z. They automatically are zoned in and it can happen automatically. Is that what this amendment does?
That is correct. It would remove that, that process that, that forces applicants to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. It would instead become treated very, basically the same as any business in the, in the community. with a staff-level administrative review, making sure that they're eligible, can meet the specific use standards that are within the zoning code, and then making sure they pass any inspections that are applicable and properly licensed.
Okay.
Councilman Graham?
Madam Mayor, as the sponsor of this bill, I know that the public hearing is scheduled for the 18th. And unfortunately, or fortunately, I will be out of the country. And so I would like to place this on the informal calendar, not pending or peeding on the public hearing, let that take place. But I would like to be here for the vote on that following first Monday in December. So I'm asking that we could place this on the informal calendar until the December meeting, so I can be here as the bill sponsor to vote and have a conversation about this amendment.
Okay, so the bill sponsor has asked to place it on the informal calendar. Now that it has been introduced, we can do that at the request of the bill sponsor. Are there any objections to doing so? And before we do that, are there any further questions of counsel at this time? Or comments? Okay. And was it looked at, I know in the past there was some discussion about just having this in a certain area, like in the Old Town area or certain areas, but is this something that when P&amp;Z looked at it, they looked at it then citywide? Is that correct? Anywhere in the city limits that falls within those residential zoning?
I mean, they looked at it as a citywide issue. There have been applications ranging from the center of the city to the edge of the city. And so it really felt it was standardizing the process across the city.
Okay, thank you.
It was the most appropriate method.
All right, so this will be, any other questions, comments? So this will be on the informal calendar, but we still will have the public hearing, correct? So that will be at the next meeting. So the public is still invited to comment at the next meeting in November, but it will not be acted on until the first meeting of December.
And that is my plan, to bring it off the formal calendar at the first meeting in December, not that it's set, but to bring it off. But I do want to be here for the vote and have another conversation about this here.
Okay, so really what you're doing essentially is giving people even one more opportunity to voice their opinion. Okay.
Point of order. It seems to me if the bill's off the calendar, it's not up for debate or consideration and therefore we would delay the hearing.
The hearings already have been published and so there's not much point in canceling a public hearing. So you're correct, it's not up for debate or consideration, but there's nothing saying that the public hearing couldn't take place. So as the mayor said, it's just kind of another opportunity for public hearing. We could cancel the public hearing, but nothing says we have to. So my philosophy is there's no such thing as too much public hearing. So if the council wanted to cancel the public hearing, that would be appropriate, but it's already been published and so, and there's nothing procedurally that would prevent the public hearing, so.
Thank you. I have heard some, at least some comment with regard to this. And there's a balance between protecting property rights and protecting the properties next to the person that has the property. So it's a balance, we heard it in strong debate and people, as much as we may disagree with their perception of what was going on, it was still their perception in fact to them. So this has created quite a bit of stir in certain communities, certain neighborhoods. So I think we ought to proceed with caution. I certainly encourage people to show up at the hearing. I'm glad that the planners have demonstrated that we have gone from a city council committee to a planning and zoning request to a planning and zoning review and it passed them. So it's been available to people to have comment on. So in that regard, I feel really good about it. I'm not sure there isn't some tweaking to be done. I'd be curious if we, do we have any correspondence that have come from the public?
We do not have any correspondence on this item. We had one person speak at the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, actually someone who was looking at starting a short-term rental and so was speaking in favor of it. And that's the only public comment or correspondence we've received.
Very good.
Okay. Any further comments? All right, thank you. 2019-69.
Amending the 2019-2020 budget by changing the position, title, and pay grade of a mechanic position to mechanic supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Mayor. We have just a couple of positions we'd like to get cleaned up. This first one is due to some increase in responsibilities, autonomy over the last two years, as is the same case in the next one. We would just recommend going from a grade 16 to a grade 17. As with the next one, we worked with the Human Resources Department with the job question, description questionnaire, and they made the suggestions that we agree with, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilman Graham?
Yeah, I said unfortunately I won't be here at the next meeting. What's the financial impact that will be added to the budget with these positions?
Neither of these two will have any effect on the budget. They're already in that range. It's just a title for this first year. Next year, there'll be certainly a change.
Do we know what it might be next year?
It'll, they'll just get to go along the grades.
To the grades 17?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions or comments? All right, 2019-70.
Amending the 2019-2020 budget by changing the pay grade of the senior management analyst position in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Mayor. This one also does not require a name change, but it will, we are asking to go from a grade 18 to a grade 19. This position is a fairly new one in our department and we've seen quite a change in what this person has done in the last two years. Again, there is no fiscal impact to this one as well.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, 2019-71.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 18 miscellaneous provisions and offenses related to controlled substances.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This ordinance amends the city's criminal code to address the issue of medical marijuana. It would allow for possession of medical marijuana by qualified patients under the strictures of the Missouri Constitution and allow for possession and use of drug paraphernalia by those who are entitled to possess medical marijuana. It creates the offense of failure to produce a medical marijuana identification card issued by the state of Missouri. This would allow law enforcement officers when encountering a person who they believe is in possession of medical marijuana to ask that they produce the appropriate identification that allows them to so possess the medical marijuana. And failure to show that identification card to the police officer is in and of itself an offense. So if you're going to be possessing medical marijuana, this bill would require that person to also possess the appropriate state-issued identification card. It addresses disposal of medical marijuana so that medical marijuana is not disposed in an uncontrolled disposal container, that it either can dispose in a manner that is controlled or disposed at a medical marijuana facility, so that way unauthorized persons don't have access to it through that. Means also establishes rules for residential cultivation, primarily to make sure that residential cultivation operations are not impacting neighbors. And also provides that persons that are engaging in residential cultivation provide notification to the city clerk, so that way the city knows where medical marijuana is present on the property. And so that way law enforcement can have an appropriate response or no response if there are, you know, reports of medical marijuana on the property. Also declares the smell or noxious odors from use of medical marijuana to be a public nuisance. So that way if it becomes a problem, that the city has a means to ask courts to address those types of public nuisances. And finally, it establishes rules for transportation of medical marijuana, essentially saying that if you're going to be traveling with medical marijuana, that the appropriate original packaging or identification of the substance is accompanying the medical marijuana. And also that medical marijuana is transported by the appropriate persons.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for that description there. Councilman Fitzwater?
I had a couple of questions. On page two of the bill, up the top under identification card, the last line says, "or similar card issued by another state." These laws vary all across the country. Are folks held accountable to Missouri law or the law from the state where they have that issued card?
So the, what the Missouri amendment allows for some reciprocity for people who are allowed to possess medical marijuana through a different state program. And so this recognizes that you could have a medical marijuana card issued in a state and would allow for possession of medical marijuana in Missouri. But while in Missouri, a person would be subject to the laws of the state of Missouri. It just essentially recognizes that someone can be authorized to possess medical marijuana through a process in another state, but once you're in Missouri, you have to follow Missouri law.
Seems to me like that opens up some challenges for law enforcement trying to...
I completely agree. So the General Assembly did not really address medical marijuana in the last General Assembly session, and so we are left with what is set forth in the state constitution. And while it is fine as a constitutional regime and some of the rules by DHSS go along with it, there is a hole in state law. And I agree, this is one of those holes and this is our best attempt to try to fill that hole. I believe that the state constitution mandates that someone who is authorized to possess medical marijuana through another state can do so in this state. This tries to help in that regard to make sure that someone that is possessing medical marijuana in Missouri at least has some sort of state-issued identification showing that they do have the right to possess medical marijuana. But I agree, there's a big hole that I'm not sure that Jefferson City code can fill and that we're really going to need some input from the state legislature at some point in time. So this is kind of our best attempt to both honor the constitutional requirements, but also give law enforcement some sort of mechanism to make sure that those who are possessing medical marijuana within the city borders are at least doing so on terms that are similar to those that are imposed on people who are Missouri State medical marijuana cardholders.
A couple of other questions. All the way at the bottom, it says in the last line, "in any amount approved by state law." Is that Missouri state law or wherever their card?
It would be under Missouri state law.
So on the next page where it has several times "by state law," that's Missouri state law?
Always Missouri state law.
Then the last one?
There's case, so I see how you would think that is vague. There's case law that says whenever an ordinance says state law, it refers to Missouri state law. So that is, that's built into that word. So we could address that and make it more clear, but the case law supports that when we say state law, we mean Missouri state law.
I appreciate that and I'm just concerned about Captain Willby and his colleagues that are going to have to deal with these folks out and about. My last, I guess more of a comment than a question, under C, the small I, term directly, are we really going to regulate how someone travels from point A to point B?
Let me find that, sorry.
Well, it just says, "term directly shall mean the shortest possible practical route from the facility to the permitted designation or destination without any voluntary detours or additional stops."
So that's, that would be kind of up to law enforcement to use that. I think that is an appropriate tool that's been adopted in some other Missouri cities. And so if you have someone that is, you know, supposed to be delivering from point A to point B, but they're out here in point Z, I think law enforcement rightfully has the interest in asking, "if you're going from here to here, why are you all the way out here?" So it's, I'm not sure if that's something that is going to be actively regulated in kind of like a paperwork form or something like that. But I think this gives law enforcement a tool to use that if they see something that is suspicious, that they can follow up on that. I think that there is a concern about kind of black market and gray market and legal substances being diverted to the illegal market. And I think this is, that is one of those tools that can help address that if someone is going way off course when they're supposed to be making a fairly direct delivery. So, but law enforcement may have some additional comments on how that could be used, but essentially that's the driving factor behind that type of regulation is making sure that if something unusual is appearing to law enforcement, that they have a means to follow up on that and investigate it.
Well, I appreciate that. My head's off to law enforcement as you try to interpret this. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? 2019-72.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 17 licenses, taxation, and miscellaneous business regulations related to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. So this bill, also related to medical marijuana, sets forth new regulations in the city's business licensing code to deal with medical marijuana facilities and the operation of medical marijuana facilities. Essentially, it sets forth a requirement that medical marijuana facilities obtain a city business license. It sets that license fee at $350. That license fee is within the range of business license fees that we charge to other types of businesses. It is on the high end, but Law Department believes that it is justified based on the kind of extended regulatory scheme that this ordinance sets forth. This business license requires that medical marijuana facilities maintain their license and certification with the Missouri Department State of Health and Senior Services. If for whatever reason its state certification or license is lost, that would automatically be grounds for revocation of a business license here in the city. It does set up some guidelines for operation of medical marijuana facilities. Particularly, it does set forth a, essentially a blackout hour for medical marijuana dispensaries. Dispensaries are the retail function of medical marijuana. And this ordinance sets forth that there are no sales between the hours of 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This does not allow for unauthorized marijuana on the premises of medical marijuana. So the state sets forth a regulatory scheme, essentially that medical marijuana in Missouri be grown, cultivated, licensed, manufactured, and then sold in Missouri. So once again, trying to separate the legitimate market from the gray or black market. Sets forth rules on who can sell and purchase medical marijuana. Sets forth that medical marijuana facilities, the property, not be used for illegal purposes. Sets forth rules for unauthorized extraction, so essentially if someone is looking to extract resins from medical marijuana and doing so with dangerous or combustible gases, that they'd only be done in conformance... they'd only be done in conformance with a manufacturing license facility issued by the Department of Health and Senior Services, excuse me. Requires a security plan consistent with state regulations, and requires that that security plan be provided to the police department, also as contemplated in the state regulations. Requires that a permanent location be utilized for medical marijuana facilities, so essentially no type of mobile medical marijuana dispensaries. It states that odors from medical marijuana facilities have to be, remain on-site, and that there be a means to control odors from wafting to neighboring properties and impacting the enjoyment of neighboring properties. Allows for sale of accessories that are related to medical marijuana. Sets forth a minimum age, so that way only persons over the age of 18 or emancipated minors or minors in the presence of their parents may go into medical marijuana facilities. And I think that probably covers the highlights of this particular ordinance. I would be happy to answer any particular questions on this, though.
Any questions or comments?
I just got a statement, and this is just me personally. This is going to be a mess. That's all I can say. I just wanted to say that on record, it's going to be a mess.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. Item 13, bill's pending. We've taken up number 58. We have 2019-61.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the County of Cole for reimbursement of costs associated with the geographic information systems.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a clerk read, this is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county to share the cost of two new sequel servers for the GIS system. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-62.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule V accessible parking spaces of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of portions of Broadway Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would add some additional handicap parking on Broadway Street near St. Peters Church. Item was discussed at the Transportation and Traffic Commission, and St. Peters agreed to build a compliant ramp next to these spaces. They completed that work, and this would sign those spaces as handicap.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-63.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way which remains in the 700 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. During the, preparing the plans for community park upgrade, I know some property cleanup issues, and so by vacating Marshall Street to get the driveway essentially to the park in the park's hands, it wouldn't be on right-of-way any longer, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. This bill would vacate that right-of-way.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal. Item 15, Resolution RS 2019-14.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson to file an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Fund Program for loans under the Clean Water Law.
Mr. Marash?
Yeah, this resolution would actually provide us with a grant for a stormwater project. DNR has a pool of money allotted towards, it's based on some formulas for Jefferson City, if we can find a matching project. So this resolution would actually allow Mr. Crowell and myself to sign some of the documents to apply for that. The project we intend to put forward to them is the, a stormwater project over off Douglas in Bolton area. It's a 50-50 grant. We've done a study in the recent past about this area, had some flooding concerns, and we believe this would make a good project for that grant.
Okay, is there any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, Presentations from the Gallery and Other Topics. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 17, Council and Staff Discussion of Presentation Topics. Item 18, New Business. Item A, we have a, will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following. Item I, Legal Actions, Causes of Action or Litigation Involving a Public Governmental Body, Section 610.021.1. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
All right, we are going to have closed session here in this room, so, and then we will reconvene in open session afterwards, so, thank you.